Church stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our only item on the agenda is the, is to go over a playground option for High Plains. You wouldn't mind introducing yourself and taking it away?
Alright, so my name is Cindy Mack and I'm from a company called Site Specifics. And I'm a representative for Miracle Recreation. And Miracle is the oldest and largest playground manufacturer in the world. They're headquartered in Monette, Missouri, so that's where the manufacturing happens. And they've been in business since 1927, so we're coming up on our 100 year anniversary. Then I've been a Miracle rep for 23 years now. And I've done playgrounds all through the area here. Gilman Way in Templeton, Templeton Center School. And I've got 20 playgrounds with the city of Worcester. But anyway, I, I met with Tammy at the, at the High Plains Park. And as soon as we heard the train go by, I had an idea because we have a train and, and the little kids just love it. I have a smaller train in Andover, right in, right on the other side of the fences, the, an ETA that goes by. Yeah, it is. It's, it's, it's good to give the little kids some imaginary play along with the movement and the climbing and the gross motor skills. So what I've done is I've divided your playground into three areas. We have the area for the two to five. I guess I'll use this. I don't know if this is going to show up on TV, but then we have the swings in the middle. And five to 12 is on this side. And this is just a big play panel that I'll explain later. Which can be used by all ages. And actually, I'm going to move that if you go with my design and you like it. And this play panel is really going to end up living over here. So that if you ever decide to take these tot swings and move them somewhere else, you have the use zone that you need. Because I'll, I'll put them here, but years from now, somebody could move these swings over here and then you wouldn't, the play panel would be in the way. I want to make sure that no matter what happens, you have what you need. So everything I design is compliant with ASTM 1487 and it's also ADA compliant. So this is the view from the street. And I'm going to just go through this document. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has. Here is, I'm going to zoom over here for the older kids. This is the five to 12 area. This piece right here is everybody's favorite. It is a climbing spinner. I know, I know.
That's awesome.
Isn't it? And it's so much fun.
Just picturing Hattie on that.
It's ADA accessible, so it has a cutout in the webbing. Where a child from, from Worcester can be placed inside the net. And then all the kids are spinning them around so everybody can play together. And so I have this, I'd say the closest one of these right now to you is in Greenfield. At a school where I have done probably three playground projects at one school where we have structures and we have swings and we have all these independent climbers and that. And when I go visit, everybody's on that. That's, that's it, right there. Right next to it is a standing seesaw. Which is a lot of fun. A child and an adult can use this together. A small child and a large child can use it together. It's, it has a governor in the middle of it. So unlike when we were little kids and you jumped off and the person off the top would get slammed to the ground, that doesn't happen with this. So you get lowered very slowly and it's got tires in the ground, little, little lawnmower tires that the kids bounce off of. So it's, it's, it's really cool and there's a lot of fun with that.
How tall is the big one?
This piece right here?
Big and for the big kids, right?
This? Yeah, eight feet high. The structure is eight feet. Which I think is a good height.
Because the big kids are going to want, yeah.
Oh yeah. If you build a, a five to 12 structure too low, then they don't use it right. They run up the slides and there's no point in buying slides if they aren't fun to go down. So I, I always put eight foot slides. Unless I'm designing a mega tower, which then I can put a 14 foot slide. So this piece actually has, and I have the other views of it, but this piece has an overhead climber. It has a traversing piece. These pieces right here, these round circles toggle. So as you move them, it's kind of like swinging through vines as you move from one to another, they kind of move. So I don't expect that the kids can do everything on this the first day they come. But they have to work up to it. And under this bridge right here is another balance piece that you move from one side to another. So there's a lot there. Oh, and in the center of the deck is a climber. I hope I have, I know I have better pictures of this, but anyway, let's get it. Here is the train from the street. Hold on. By the way, we have a, over here you can't see it, but you can see in the big picture, we have a tickets booth play panel. So in front of the train, I put a, I put that separately so the kids can sell tickets to the train. Nobody will buy a ticket sale until the kids can sell them. Free, as above. So this, this side has a climber right here. Onto a, that is a, I want to say, yeah, it's a four foot deck. And there's a, a steel tunnel they can crawl through. And then these are five foot decks and I'll show you the train from the other side of the street. Or from the field, rather. Yes. Yeah. Why do you want a little look at the train? So when you, when you're on the field, this is the side you'll see. Here's your ADA access right here. This is your transfer point. You have a cow catcher right here. That's a climbing wall. Okay, so you climb up the climbing wall onto the first deck through the, through the, um, the tube to the second deck. Then you can come down a climber. That's just an arch climber. This is a honeycomb climber to the five foot deck. And we have a straight slide and a spiral slide up there. So that's pretty much it for the two to five. Oh, well, and you can't see it, but right there you can see the shadow of the ticket booth. I'd forgotten we even have that. But how can they not, how can you not put that on there?
You had a dog picture, you said that's going to be sad.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the front page. So now, here, here you can see, oh, now you can see, here's a ticket booth, there's a cow catcher.
Like a, like a climbing, right?
Yeah, it's a climbing wall. And that's great for little littles because you can't fall through that. So if you have two year olds, they scamper right up that, like nobody's business. So that's really good. And I tried to, I kept it low on purpose because any red blooded four year old is going to have a minute or two on that, but they're running to the other side of the park. They don't know that they're not five. Maybe not all of it, but they can do, you know, the slides. So anyway, we've got that. And I'll get to this in a minute. Okay, so let me back up a little. Here's the swing section. So it's swings and sensory play. So this piece right here is model adapter Rube Goldberg. I don't know if you're familiar with Rube, you know, the machines that, that are really complicated to make like a piece of toast or a cup of tea. This, this piece is like a Rube Goldberg machine inside. And we've actually worked with them to develop these pieces. So it's a big two sided play panel that adults and children can play together or just two kids or a couple of kids. You have to move things to get the ball through it all. It doesn't just happen. And so we've got a multi-user swing right here that can hold up to like four little kids. And yeah, four belt seats. These are really cool. These hold an adult and a toddler. So you can swing facing your child or your grandchildren. And then we have two regular toddlers as well.
So would those be considered ADA if somebody had a hit or would we have to explain them?
Here's the thing, nobody sells an ADA swing. They're all called therapeutic swings. But those swings, anything that is on a surface that is considered ADA is considered, it's all accessible. So we do sell a therapeutic swing, uh, swing seat. And I can certainly put one in there. It runs around, I'm going to guess $1,500. Oh, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. And you can get one anytime and it can go in any of, well, it can't go in this bag where this guy is, but it can go anywhere else. Okay? So that's easily swappable. We could even change it now. I mean, not right this second, but that's an option. Here we are with the older kids again. This is from the street view that you've just seen earlier. But you can see, see the plastic rings inside, under the big deck, so that's an easy sort of deck. Yep, yep, whoops, maybe. I remember. That's easier to see. It is. I'm not sure I could do it.
So are those rings suspended by like bungees essentially?
Chains.
Chains, okay. So those are, they're, they move around a little as you climb on them?
And they're meant to be a different, so you kind of climb up through them to get up to the deck. But there's other ways up the deck too.
And so then you, those would take you into the center of that deck?
Yep, there's an opening right here.
Oh, yeah, I see the inner rail there, yeah.
It's all really well, well thought out. So in this structure, you have what, what is, it's, it's a transfer point, but it's one that I've created using decks. But you also have ADA access here. It's right here. It's right here. So you've got a one foot deck, a foot and a half deck to a two foot deck. And then this climber goes from two feet to eight feet. See that right there? Oh yeah, but I mean, like an eight year old kid, they'll run up that. I've even, I can even climb down it. But, um, so that's, it's a great way to get up fast because we don't, nobody makes a, a transfer point that goes to an eight foot deck. So I get you up there and it's considered, you ready for this? This is considered an ADA accessible route. Yeah, I know, I know. What, what is considered ADA and what is really able to be used by someone are two different things. But that's the way the playground world is. And honestly, there's, it's not just people who have trouble blocking that ADA is for. Like I have, um, I have no 3D vision. So something like that kind of scares me and for me to master that is a big deal. Bleachers freak me out. You know, because I don't know where things are. So there's all sorts of invisible disabilities and kids with like ADHD and autism need to spin and swing. Yeah, well, it helps them regulate their senses. So I'm always trying to put spinners and swings in every playground because it helps that population. So ADA people obviously are, most people just jump right to ramps and, and therapeutic swings. But there's so many other things that people need that they can get from a playground also. So anyway, let's go.
And that was one of the concerns of one of the first parents, I think, the first meeting to have them.
For the therapeutic swing? Oh, we can definitely.
No, no, I'm not saying, because if you put in the, the $1,500 swing, you're taking out two swings.
Not only one, only one seat.
Only one seat?
Because, alright, unless she was talking about the one with the big metal platform that you roll the wheelchair on. I don't sell those because those are dangerous. Those can actually kill a kid. If, if, as it's swinging. No, the one with the big metal platform, as it's swinging, if a small toddler runs in front of it and gets it in, then it actually counts. Yeah, we don't, I don't go there, although there's two in your bed for, at a public park. And there's videos of teenagers swinging on them. And kids running in front of them. And I watched it for like two seconds and just shut it off. I can't watch. It's just a matter of time and that's going to be so unfortunate. Anyway, here is your view of the older kids' play area from the field. So you've got the spiral slide, you've got this wiggle worm climber going up to the eight foot deck. You've got another climber right here going up to your eight foot deck. And you have a better view of the toggling pieces here. The transfer point right here and the nice overhead climber. Oh, oh, and I threw in, see these right here? Those are ADA accessible hand rigs. So a child could roll up in a wheelchair and, and do something like that. Kids, children who are not in a chair love those, forward and backwards. And that's such a nice little add-on for like 260 bucks. So I like to throw that in there. And you have that other balance piece under the bridge again. Let's see what else we've got here. Let me zoom out for a minute. So here is that climbing spinner that I was talking about. It actually has two levels on it. I don't think you, yeah, it's.
I see the second.
So much fun, yeah.
Do you have one of these set up someplace in a really tough area where they really abuse the equipment? Do you know of one that's in service?
Well, I have, I have one kind of like this in Worcester. Knights of Columbus Playground, but it's a smaller version. And I have that at Four C, um, at Four Corners Elementary School in Greenfield.
There's a dome looking one in here.
What's that? In where?
There's a circle, a spherical one in there.
So here's the ADA access where they can go sit inside. So a more timid child will climb inside and, and hold on to their life. While the crazy kids are on the outside driving. Which, which they need to get that crazy out of them. So it accommodates up to 14 users.
I know what she was thinking. So that's four, up to 14 kids on that one?
If you've got seven or so hanging on the outside and busy.
At the bottom is 11 feet wide. It's a big beast of a piece. It's really cool.
We had soccer this weekend and there were tons of children up there.
And they'll all be homeless. And we're putting one of these in Rochester. Here is the standing seesaw. You can see the two different sized kids. And because it's a full promol, all you have to do is the bigger child leans in more, devotes the weight. And then totally looks. And that is fun. And you can really get that thing going. Here is the sensory panel that I was talking about, the Rube Goldberg Miracle Machine. Can you see it okay?
So does that have like a, like plexiglass kind of thing?
Yes, on both sides. And so we, this is a brand new product. And they had it for a year at the KOA Campgrounds in New Jersey, Northern Jersey getting defeated to crap. And it survived. Yeah, that's a test now, yeah.
I know one concern we had from someone who, who actually worked with MOC, which is a state-run organization. Helps kids that are, works with kids who are preschool age. And one of the comments from her, a previous one, was that some of the plexiglass type ones, they get like a fog inside of them over time. I don't know if that's something that's.
I don't see, I know she's talking about like, I don't know, we have bubble panels. Those things get fogged up. Something fierce. I don't put it on my designs, but there's been no complaints about this. And you can replace the plexiglass. So I mean, so 10 years from now, if it got scratched or somebody graffitied it, it's made to be taken apart. And you can buy the new plexiglass piece for it and put that, put that together. But it comes, I believe it comes all assembled. But yeah, that was as the rep force, the first thing we said was, can we fix it? Because I don't want to sell anything I can't fix.
And how about cleaning? Are there certain cleaners you got to stay away from or do you know of?
Are you planning to clean?
No.
I'm just wondering.
No, no, no. I'm just thinking different camera, because that's usually what, goofs them up.
Fogs them up.
Yeah, we don't, we don't. I mean, we'll hit it with a power washer, pressure washer after it's done being installed.
Put that too.
So you actually spin the wheel and guide it to, there's pencils and booths and all sorts of things you have to manipulate to get it, the ball into the cup of tea.
How popular is that? Looks like it would be pretty popular.
Oh, we love, wow. So it's brand new, alright? And every year, our new products are at our sales meeting. So we, we go somewhere that has a huge convention center in the hotel. And they actually build playgrounds in the hotel. And then they give us a bunch of drinks and let's play. It's awesome.
Looks like it would be popular.
We all had a great time. We were having a lot of fun with it. And you know what? It's, it's captivating. It's going to draw you in, right? And for a little kid who's maybe shy, they can make a friend on the other side, you know? I, I think it has a lot of potential and it's just something different. Most of our sensory panels do one thing. This does a whole bunch of things.
Is it different on the other side?
It's, no, we just, you've just seen it, the other side, you can still manipulate pieces from the other side. So it's actually two sided. And here is the top view. It's hard to, you know, it's hard to show a playground that's a big long hallway, if you will.
It's a little different.
Well, because trying to get it to fit on a, on a street, right?
It'll be unique. Well, I think it's a, you know.
Honestly, it's just, I like that the train's like leading everything.
Could you put a horn on it?
There's a little bell right here.
Oh, bingo, okay. Little bell. Well, what it is.
Could replace it with a big bell?
How can you see the bell?
The neighbors might not like it.
It is a steel.
Get a real train horn.
With a four long piece of chain that you rock back. And at schools, they use it to end recess. They like to pick a kid, ring the bell. And it's not really a bell to bell, but it, it does a couple of things. It gives somebody something to do. But it also helps you meet ADA. Because for every three elevated components, there has to be so many ground level components. There's all sorts of rules. I, um, at the bottom of this, let me zoom out for a minute. At the bottom of this drawing, see that red, see those red checkmarks? I don't put those there. And see that certificate? If I don't design this right, those things don't show up on this drawing. I'm using proprietary software and so if I don't do it right, I can't, I can't take it. And if I try to alter the drawing, those disappear. It's really bizarre, but it's just.
So if you make one change, then all that.
Well, it depends what the change is, like, you know.
So this, yeah, so this plan isn't keeping any of the existing things that are out there. This is all.
They've given you, what's there has given you more than what it should have. It's, it's really, you know.
What about the trees?
Yes, what about the trees? That's a very good question.
Because we don't have much shade down there.
Okay, I don't. I did not put the trees in the drawing. But if I remember correctly, there's a tree right about here, isn't there?
I think we have like four of them.
There's like here and here. I'm hoping, I'm hoping they're here and here. Because see, see the clouds around, I call them clouds. Around, I can't have anything in those areas. So for instance, if there's a tree back here, I could pull the train this way, right? I can pull the swings this way. Yeah, a little bit. Maybe we plant a newer tree or move it over again or, you know, I don't know.
We don't want the train to be crooked either.
We could though. We could do that. Yeah, we could make the train diagonal. I mean, you know, like we haven't done a survey, but that costs money. But I can try to triangulate the trees.
We do want to do additional tree plantings as part of the project regardless of keeping the other ones. We want to include some tree plantings.
Now, does your company design make any like, I went to, they ran an alfalfa, they got a, it's just like four post tent like. And they remove it, you know, the, in the winter time, they take that down and that out of the way. But it seemed like very easy and it's just great shade and a great area for people.
Those are, those are great. And for instance, the Grafton Swim area, are you familiar with that? That's not far from here, is it? Yeah, so I did the one with the Grafton Swim area. It's a 20 by 40. But here's the thing with those, you pay more to install it than you do to buy it. So I carry a complete line with those. I also carry all steel shelters. So I could do a steel zebra, I can do a steel, you know, hedge roof, you know, any, any, anything you want, all in steel. Where the roof would be steel, the frame is steel. Those are more expensive. But I do have a licensed GC as one of my installers who can install those, pull permits, do the footers, work with the building department. But for instance, I'm putting a 10 by 20 fabric shade structure in Turner's Falls. Next month as a matter of fact, for a head start. It's $27,000 installed.
Well, I mean, if nothing more, to keep it in consideration when we design it to allow for a spot for that. Because I'm sure shade's not a big thing. There's not a lot of shade down there.
And we can plant more trees, but it's going to take them time.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Well, you can do this. You can do these, see those sail shades? I can put one of those on your train. It's, it's a sail roof. If you look, what page do you want?
It was on 47.
Page 47 in the back. It's just one of those little.
And I was thinking more about the parents that are going to be agonizing under the sun, hot sundown, that's all.
Well, and I didn't put any benches in here. If, if something goes, if something goes in a park, I'd sell it and install it.
I'd rather have something for the kids than the parents. Because the parents, but the parents or grandparents should be with the kids, but they could also bring an umbrella or something else. And I'd rather see.
They have tables set up in the one in Alfalfa. I just thought it was a great idea. The kids want to picnic or whatever. That's all.
I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but.
Current ones, we want it still happening.
Structures than seating.
Replace those potentially.
Even over in Hubbardston, they have like a canopy thing. They had a playgroup over there and the parents weren't sitting under it. And it was a real hot sunny day. So here, you have a place for them to sit and they weren't, they weren't using it.
Yeah, it's just the thought. I'm beyond it. I'm not opposed to it.
I love a lean. Hubbardston, I'll usually sit under the shady spot personally, but.
But if you actually watch the parents.
So the, the structure we're building right now in Winston in at the Y has one of these sail roofs. And it's 28 feet across, so it's big. You are supposed to take this down in the winter. And if a hurricane comes through. However, the first one of these I ever sold was at Blythewood Park in Worcester, the year we had nine feet of snow. Remember that year? It was like 2016 or 2017 or something? They didn't take them down and they're fine. They're still there.
14 and 15.
However, also, I will add that I have this on the, in Hayrow, right on the Merrimack River. And they didn't take it down for Hurricane Sandy and it got shredded. So they just had to buy new fabric. The steel was fine. It is new fabric. So it's.
Just a thought.
Oh yeah, I've got it. Bring you all that. Any questions or?
Oh, and the bigger kid one? Do you have a straight path to the top? Like is there an easy ladder or is it just geared more towards?
Well, you can go up the, um, these two climbers, this wiggly worm climber or the canyon climber. Are actually straight up to the eight foot decks. And it's a vertical climber, so that would work. Or right up through the center in those big rings will get you up there.
So is the, is the canyon one, is that just a ladder with a cage around it kind of?
It is. I'll show you. Hold on. It's like loops. I think.
I was just thinking if a kid goes up there, that really shouldn't and an adult has to get up there.
Well, that's just, that's exactly why you don't want it to be too easy to get up there either. That's another reason. Where is from the street? And then this one should be from the field. Here's the canyon. Hold on. Did you? We'll climb up if we need to.
Honestly, easiest way is probably that one that goes like that.
See this? It's circles, like half circles.
So you could just go up the outside of that like a ladder?
Yeah, yeah. Or you can climb in the middle of it.
I don't know if that'd fit in the middle of it. I don't know if that'd fit in the middle of it, but, yeah.
But, you know, that's the trouble with ramp systems, and people don't think about that, but I've thought about it. I have a ramped playground that's fully ramped up to eight feet at Rockport Elementary School, and that means a two-year-old can get all the way up to the eight-foot deck and try to come down one of those slides. And they don't have the body control to come down the slide properly.
Right.
So sometimes ramp structures are dangerous. Yeah, they'll tumble, yeah. So it's, you, you kinda wanna make it so that only the kids that really should be up there are up there. But yeah, I mean, can a parent get up there? Yeah. Maybe a grandparent, I can do that. You could do, you could do this big climber right here. That's actually pretty comfortable, cause you're holding the sides.
Yeah.
And you're just going one step at a time, but.
Now, right underneath here, on, sometimes these structures underneath, you'll see like a picnic table, and the parents will actually sit right under, underneath, because you're getting the shade from the top, you know, it's like.
Is it a, is it a picnic table that's part of the playground? Or is it?
They'd have like a sandbox and, and.
Well, we have, we have play panels, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Because that way, we got shade for the parents, we still have the structure, and you're kind of.
But.
But maybe asking too much or not.
No, it's, no, here's the thing. If I, I'm not allowed to put a play panel under a deck that has a climber. So this deck has a climber, I can't put the play panel here.
Because somebody could fall, okay.
Yeah, you can fall in, but, so there are so many rules. But I could put a play panel under a slide.
So really, the one type, prob.
But it would just be, it would just be a little, it's a little thing. Play panels are expensive, so if you notice, there's none on this. Each play panel, like that ticket booth thing, is adorable. And you have to have it. But if I told you how much it is, hold on a second. Ticket panel of a deck, sixteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars, just for that piece of plastic, not the two poles, and then you buy two steel poles and the clamps that hold it in place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money, but I, I know what you're talking about, and it can be done, but it changes the design.
And it's probably an older one with old regulations where you can't do it today. Now,
Yep.
Another thing that would probably be sturdier is maybe like a bus stop, you know, enclosure where you can sit at, and only have like the back panel side, and that's a sturdier where you don't have to replace the fabric, but it would be open in the front, but you'd get, you know, some protection.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd wanna look into some seating options and maybe some load covered.
You know, it's not as, it's not as, not as, yeah, it's.
Oh, well, you know, I do.
Just allow some shade, like a link here, like then.
Often, see if I can find a picture of this.
Yeah, like wherever you see it, but, yeah. And you probably don't even need the back panel, which would make it even cheaper just.
Just as.
We have an eight-foot steel, punch steel roof.
Okay.
That is eight feet by eight feet, and then I take four poles, and that's kind of a shelter.
Well, it's kinda.
Yeah, that's kind of.
But, but I don't pull permit for this playground equipment.
Yeah.
But my installers get installing it, so they charge a lot to install it, cause it's hard. It's hard to get those four poles leveled plumb, you know, and get the roof level while that's plumb and it moves around, so I mean, it can be done. I've done it. Um, closest to here would be Southampton.
Okay.
How big is it?
Eight feet, eight feet square. It's made to put four playground decks underneath that. Uh, you know, make an eight-foot thing, but we just skip the decks, do the poles and roof.
Poles and roof.
Now, see how that roof, that roof is punch steel? It doesn't block all the sun.
Well, yeah.
It gives you some shade.
Yeah, enough, yeah, yeah. I, I like these roofs. They hold up, they last forever, and they look really nice. I mean, I have plastic roofs too, but they're worn.
Yeah, was that like a powder coated steel or something like that?
Yeah, yep. So our decks are eleven-gauge steel, PVC dipped, and the rest of the steel that you see in that picture is, is powder coated steel. And our powder coated steel has a texture to it called gator grip, and it's in the steel.
It's not gonna slip.
You just, it's just, it's just, it's three D, so you don't slip. It's really nice. And you'd have to go to like.
So it's dipped over like that gritty stuff, or is it?
No, only the decks are dipped. Everything else is powder coated and, and cooked in an oven. Um, but, so these climbers, right, and the tops of the railings have that three D. It's actually in the steel. I thought it was in the paint, but it's not. It's in the steel, and we're the only manufacturer that has that.
So that would actually grip better because of the, the flat?
And it's, it's better on your feet too, as you're climbing up these big climbers too. Yep, and you can go to Gilman Wake Park and see that.
I mean, I haven't heard of any other manufacturer that does that. Is it the only one that does it? Yeah, okay, I haven't heard of it.
It's actually, that's the guy.
Yeah, it is a good idea.
Yeah, it's really nice.
And that's on the one at, at the elementary school in Templeton too?
Yeah, Templeton Center School. You know, I actually built that twice.
Yeah.
Did you know it used to be across the street? We originally built it across the street, and then when they redid the school, they asked me to move that.
Yeah.
And, um, so.
So that's right across from the fire station.
So it, where the fire station is back behind there where the school, yeah.
Yes.
But as you're looking at that one, it's, it's not easy to move these, because they're all in concrete. Every, everything's.
Well, not looking to move it.
No, but what I'm saying is, if you go to Templeton Center School, it's gonna look a little beaten up, because we had to, because we had to uninstall it and then put it in a truck for two years, and then take, and then they moved the truck on me, and then I had to take it out of the truck and put it back in the ground.
Oh, so it wasn't picked up?
That's right, and we didn't wrap each piece. I mean, when it comes from the factory, everything's wrapped and beautiful. But once it's, you know, and, and little people kill things. I don't know if you've noticed that. I love them. I love them death, but they kill stuff. I don't know how they make holes in steel, if they do it. I know. I did a playground in Lawrence during COVID, during lockdown, like when we were done with it. In fact, it's a playground that's in my email signature.
Okay.
And myself and the facilities manager decided that it was so beautiful that we weren't gonna let kids on it. Cause they're a neighborhood, you know, it was so pretty.
Wow.
It was so pretty. It was like, oh.
Go back a couple days later.
Cause they're gonna kill it, well, especially in Lawrence. I mean, it's a tough neighborhood. But it came out nice.
But that's where you need to test them.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's, it's good. But, um, I'm just trying to think of anything else that I might have left out. I, my installers are certified, I'm a certified playground safety inspector, and I've been taking the exam every three years since two thousand. And actually, I, once I found out that my customers were in the class, I started going every time I held a class, cause I met more people and got more jobs. So, you know, and my installers know this, and I work very closely with them. Like today, I stopped, I went to Wintonden for about three hours just to see how everything was going, to make sure things were being put in the right place, and I'm very hands-on, I'm a control freak.
Where's the one in Wintonden?
At the light.
At the light?
Like a pictures. Not, not on this, but.
And that one's being installed right now?
Yes.
Nice.
What town is it?
Wintonden.
Oh, Wintonden.
Up an hour away, so, I think, um, let's see, this is not, here's the, here's the frame for the big shade structure that's going above it.
Yeah.
We haven't installed it yet. So this is what we're doing today, and we started last week. We'd be further along, but the town was in there building the wall as we're trying to build the playground. That was fun. I pulled up and there's a big dump truck in the middle of the playground, I'm like, um, that's kinda wild. But we got through it, we got through. So, anyway, any more questions? Oh, I'm a state-certified WBE.
Okay.
I have a one-woman show. I always answer my phone. You can get me on weekends, nights. State, the city of Wester likes to call me Sunday mornings. So I'm, I'm, I'm around. My guys do repairs, you know, I mean, not for free, but.
Is there a warranty or anything?
There's many warranties. Um, let's bring it up. This'll be interesting. I'll do this from here. Here's all the factories I wrote for. Well, this is the one from twenty nineteen, but it hasn't changed much, so it's in. So your depth posts and the fastening system is warranted for as long as you own the product. So we have a, what we, everything gets attached with a compression ring. It's two halves, closer around. They get screwed together, and the ring has a channel on the top and the bottom, and then there are bar sockets. There are two halves that grab, one half grabs the top channel, one half grabs the bottom channel. Everything attaches that way. And so all of that, all the fastening system is guaranteed with the poles as long as you own it. Fifteen-year warranty on depths, steps, and rotationally molded, that means all your slides. Roof panels. I've never replaced a roof panel in twenty-three years. Stainless steel slides, I didn't move them or anything. Ten-year warranty on the fabric shade frames and the fabric itself. Unless you pick red, yellow, or electric, I don't know, some weird colors, but I don't, I don't know why those aren't warranted as long as the others. Uh, let's see if I ever left site, like, we're not even, none of this is in your design. Anything that has a moving part, however, is one year. So that means the standing seesaw, the spinner. But if something has a problem, I don't sell it, cause I don't have time to take your call. And I don't have time to send my guys out to, you know, fix something. Um, so if, if, if that cone spinner was a pain in the butt, it wouldn't be in your design. I haven't had any trouble with that one at all. And the multi-panda, that, that standing seesaw? That, that is fine too. I mean, the swing seats are a year. They usually last, in fact, I did Gilman Wake Park, I believe, ten years ago, and they just ordered their first replacement swing seat for me, and they're shocked that it, they've lasted that long. So they, they hold up.
Yeah.
So that's a warranty. But basically, um, I mean, things do fail. I've had decks where the rubber's like bubbled up and peeled, but it's one call for me to call the factory and they ship it. They'll ship it to you. Now, you have to pay if you want me to swap it out, cause we don't cover the, the labor to swap a piece out.
Okay.
But it's also pretty straightforward on how to swap it out. A lot of times, people just want us to do it, cause we know what we're doing.
Okay.
That's it. And I did give you an installation price. My installation is covered under FAC one-twenty-two, up to fifty thousand dollars, and that's how much it cost in SLYB. So.
Great.
Anything else? I really love your business.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming in and presenting this.
If you, if you'd like some references, please let me know. I did the Hubbardston Elementary School. I did the big, yeah, I didn't do the big part. I tried, but they didn't use me.
Rainbow end is, yeah, the, the one at the rec field, but the school there, and then you said Gilman Wake and Templeton.
Gilman Wake and Templeton Center.
Definitely been to those.
Actually, the one at the rec field, some of the coating, they've actually have taken, they've taken it off already, believe it or not.
So.
Like, I couldn't, like, hold.
Okay, so, anybody want, um, sure, can?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so private equity firms, right?
So private equity firms buy tiers of product. I don't know if you know that. But when they decide to go into an industry, they'll buy a top-tier product, a middle tier, and a bottom tier, and capture the entire market, right? Miracle is owned by Playpower, which is owned by a private equity firm. We are their top-tier product. That product is the middle tier, that is also owned by Playpower, and Little Tights is the bottom tier, which is also owned by Playpower, and if Playpower heard me say this, they'd burn my butt right now. But it's the truth. So I, I, and that's why I've been a miracle rep for twenty-three years, because if anything happens, it gets taken care of right away, and rarely anything happens. So.
Great.
And, oh, I just did a school in Turner's Falls, and I was not supposed to do it. One of my competitors won the job, but they couldn't get the equipment for thirty-eight weeks, so the landscape architect brought me in at the last minute.
Yeah.
I did a design, and he said to me, who's gonna run the project? I said, I'm gonna run the project. He goes, what do you mean? I said, well, you know, tell me when you want it done. I will get my guys, I will order it, I will get my guys, they'll install it, I will get the, we did port and place rubber for that, which is really complicated. I said, I'll get the sub-bass in, I'll get the rubber, and it'll all be done forcefully. And I pulled it off in a very short timeframe, and they're through. So, I mean, I can get you that, I can get you that reference too, but I, like I said, I'm a control freak, and I'm on top of it. You should use me, and plus you have fun, oh, but you're. You know, I mean, why are you gonna even bother doing any of it if you're not gonna do it right? I do it right the first time, and if I don't, okay, cause I do mess up every now and then. I take care of it, and I'll come back to you with another bill, I need that. Okay, I've never understood contractors to say, oh, I didn't do that right the first time. Here's how much it's gonna cost you to fix it. It's like, excuse me? I paid for that the first time.
Great. So, yeah, we'll, we appreciate you coming in and presenting. We'll.
Yep.
If Maureen's not here, I'm sure she'll, she'll watch this, and then probably our next select board meeting, we'll have a, a good discussion on the different presentations, get some input from the public, and we'll have a decision pretty soon, I think.
Awesome. Do you have like a timeline for this? Like, let's say, let's say in a perfect world, everybody's picked something by next week, next month.
Mm-hmm.
Which, oh, oh. Go ahead. I was gonna mention, my, my pricing does not include demo and site prep.
Yeah.
But I can do demo and site prep, but then I'm over my budget for the state contract.
Okay.
And it also doesn't include installing the wood fiber, cause that would push me over the budget too. It's the hard stuff. I'm doing the hard stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thousands of pieces come off the truck, and they literally are thousands of pieces. And then we put it together, so.
Did this include rubber mats?
The mat.
For ADA? That's not part of this price?
Can they be put into the?
Oh, did, well, wait a minute. I'm saying no, but, oh, no, yes, yes, it says little mading.
Yeah.
But I didn't give you a count. I just said you can get somebody for this, but furnished only. But they get zip-tied. You guys can leave.
Yeah, right.
And it's not.
I, I was asking more about material than installation.
So you have a cap of what you can sell?
For install? I, no, I don't have a cap for equipment or materials with state contract. You could buy a million dollars, in fact, I wish you would. A million dollars worth of playground equipment for me on this contract, on one PO, and that would be okay. In fact, the state would love it too, cause I have to give them one percent of whatever I sell on the contract. On this, can you believe that?
Well, with the state contract, there's a limit.
On the labor, and the labor is fifty thousand, is the limit on labor. If it's gonna cost me more than fifty to do the playground, to install it, then you have to put the install out to bed.
Okay.
Yeah. Back in the day, it used to be ten. I was like, really? I can't do anything for ten thousand dollars?
Four-three.
Okay.
Four-three.
Great.
So.
Um, so as far as timeline goes, we're waiting to hear back on Parks Grant for this year.
Okay.
Aside from that, we do have other funds dedicated towards it, so I think, I'm not sure what this is.
We can't use, yeah, we can't use any, so we could, we could do the contract and sign and do all that with whoever we decide. We can't do any of the funding until FY twenty-six, so July first is when we need to have, of next year.
Okay.
Yeah, that's our go.
That would be the soonest you could.
That's the soonest we, if, if we're using the Park Grant, if we don't get the Park Grant, we could start, you know, theoretically sooner.
Okay.
Uh, but if we have the Park Grant, which would be an extra, potentially an extra hundred thousand dollars, then we can't put out any money until the, July first, so.
Okay.
And we should know that, um.
Hopefully soon, hopefully October.
Middle of, of October. Middle of, of October, we should know if we have that grant. But, so that'll, that'll set our timeline. Either way, next summer is when we're planning it to go in.
Okay.
What?
Potentially next spring if it doesn't work.
Is there a, a break in price that if it was as soon as there's a thaw in the spring type thing? Sometimes you get site, site jobs like that and you're like the first contractor to start as soon as you have a thaw or something. And you can start, instead of April, you're able to do it the end of February or something like that.
So I've been really aggressive on my pricing. In fact, when I wanted to prepare for this man, uh, for this meeting, I was panicked until I realized what I had done. Um, so prices go up...
Got a meeting.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
You have my company. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, prices go up January first, but I will hold pricing for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we, we would, we would lock into a contract before that point.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be great.
We, we don't have to wait till Jan, till July first to lock into a contract. Um, so I think once the board makes a decision, you know, and we might want a couple things changed to, just to look at, benches and other things like that. But once we pick who we're going with, we'll work just to like really just get those final details together and we'll be able to, they, they actually, the, the funding source, they said that we're absolutely able to, to initiate a contract. We just can't actually spend any money until July first if we get the grant.
All right, fair enough.
And if we don't get the grant, we'll move forward sooner.
Right.
Well, I could do it next month. Miracle is finally back. During COVID, we got to a fifty-two week lead time, but we're back to eight weeks.
Nice.
And we, we used to run at four.
Yeah.
But business is booming and so that's what's pushed us back.
So... So if you were awarded a contract, how long from when you sign a contract to the job's done would it take?
I'm, I'm thinking that this job is gonna take us ten days to install.
That's it?
Yeah.
So it'd be a few weeks of lead time. We would have to do the demo and then, yeah, so that's, and then ten days for the install? Okay.
I'm guessing. Now, that's ten really good days. That's ten long days. It's not ten days in November. We only have like six hours of sunlight, but...
Yeah.
And that's ten days with no rain or nothing else?
I've been working in the rain.
No, but...
I've worked in many, many, many days.
With the installers, it's not their first rodeo, so they...
Oh, no, it's the same guys that do all my jobs.
And they know if they don't work.
Well, actually, so my installers, um, it's a long story, but the two guys, my two lead installers, used to work under a company called J T Construction back in the, like, twenty-fourteen. And they were like just fledglings back then. And then one of them got promoted to supervisor, site supervisor for the jobs. And I sold so much in twenty sixteen that we were literally installing seven days a week. And they put their foot down and said, we need to go home. And I was like, no! But so, and then Jamie retired from J T Construction. I tried to keep Anthony and Nick busy, but with COVID and stuff, I couldn't keep them busy. So they, I couldn't keep them busy twelve months. And plus, it's hard to install the brass person also. So what they did was they, um, worked for a company called Premier Generator out of Middlebrow Mass. And, um, when they're not installing, my playgrounds are installing whole house generators. So these guys are the real deal. They know, they're not just guys with shovels. They... Well, they're not electricians, but somebody at Premier is. But I mean, so...
Yeah. Great.
They're good guys. And they show up. And that's, that's half the battle. I do have other installers who tell me they're gonna be there on Monday. And then when I called them on Monday, they go, oh, yeah, um, next Monday.
Yeah.
And that's, that, that just makes everybody look bad. So I don't, I only use them in emergencies. If they're gonna show up, I don't see why I should spoon feed you jobs because that's what I'm doing. They just land in your laps. Think about it. Because they're not updating them. All right, I don't put this, I don't know how to shut this off.
Thank you for, yeah, we can, we can shut that off as long as you have your cords.
But I promised, what's her name? Ellen, that I would plug this back in.
Okay.
And you better.
I know, right? Because Ellen knows where I live.
All right. Take a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn?
Second.
More paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go.